Listen well.
We're on.
Okay, we're live and hello, everybody. Still doing a little housekeeping here. Welcome to the work session for November 26, 2019. We're going to start out tonight with citizen comments. Before we, for items that are not on the agenda, I need to ask Mr. Lewis whether he is going to speak at the public meeting or whether he wants to make a citizen comment that I was just discussing. Well, we prefer you to make public comments when the board can talk back and forth. But if that's what you want to do, we're going to honor your request. Okay, I have Brian Laster and I have Patrick Baggett and I have Chris Lewis. I'm going to give you each 90 seconds.
Mayor Moore and Alderman, my name is Brian Laster. I live at 424 Murphy's Borough Road and my home is in the Hunter Year Floodplain. In fact, all the houses in my neighborhood are in the floodplain, built long before anybody talked about floodplains and what you could and could not do in them. While I've been in my home 18 years, I have neighbors who've lived in theirs over 50. So I've come before you today because this is my community and I think our city government can make living in the floodplain better for us by changing regulations on how we maintain, repair, and improve our homes. One very simple way to do this is by changing the time period in which substantial improvements and damages are calculated and how market value is determined. And I thank you for your time consideration.
Thank you all. Patrick Baggett at 422 Murphy's Borough Road. I want to thank, as you all know, we've been engaging in dialogue on the flood zone ordinances. And when we started this process, we went through all the planning department wonderful meetings and feedback period and offered some flood zone changes that we felt like we wanted to see included in this new rewrite. And that included a couple of things, one Brian, that Brian mentioned, but also we asked that you lower the freeboard from three foot to one foot. And we asked that you would consider doing that and have some discussion on doing that. But I really want to thank the city and the planning department and you all for your time and having engaged really thoroughly with us in this discussion and city staff especially as well. Let's find a way to improve life safety, improve our homeowners' property rights, and find to take away some of the higher regulatory burdens that we have on flood property owners while also improving the community. I wish you would take that up in whichever way you see fit. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll put you down for the 7 o'clock. Okay, we're going to move on now to item one, which is ordinance 2019-38, an ordinance amending Title 14, Chapter 2 of the Franklin Municipal Code to change the adoption date of the pending Franklin zoning ordinance.
That pretty much describes it. The municipal code references an adoption date for the zoning ordinance and this would align that with your final vote on a zoning ordinance that's before you. December 10th is the vote, scheduled vote.
Any questions? Item two, professional services agreement with Windrow Phillips Group. Provide lobbying and advisory services on behalf of the City of Franklin.
So Franklin, along with nine other cities across the state of Tennessee, similar cities to us in terms of size and the fact that they have a city manager in place, et cetera, have worked together with Windrow Phillips in terms of tracking legislation and topics that are particularly of importance to our individual cities and cities collectively across the state. So this would be a continuation of that arrangement.
No questions, no comments? Item three, professional services agreement with ES, I'm sorry, ECS Southeast LLP for construction engineering, testing and inspection services for the municipal services complex improvements in an amount not to exceed $40,810. Any question about that one? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five. City of Franklin contract 2019-0309, accepting the 2019 to 20 funding approval agreement from the Department of Housing and Urban Development for community development block grant funds.
We'll go ahead and do number five. I think we missed number four, but we'll go ahead and talk about our CDVG program. Tom's here, so let's let him go at it.
Our annual action plan was approved back in May and this is just a funding agreement from HUD actually awarding us the $353,000. Yes, ma'am.
That is not different from what we've done in the past.
Correct. This is our plan that was approved back in May with emergency rehabilitation, community-based development organization, public facilities work, and also land acquisition for affordable housing.
Just want to make sure the public heard that. So thank you for articulating that.
Yes, ma'am.
Item four, resolution 2019-108, initiating annexation process and draft plan of services for 1268 Lewisburg Pike.
Thank you. This is the site of the former Hennpek Market. It is not contiguous to the city limits, but the request is part of the water wastewater line extension to the Oakview Elementary School as well as the upcoming new Williamson County Middle School. Part of the inter-local agreement, the Williamson County Schools has agreed to request annexation of their properties which border the site to the west. Plans were approved by the county to renovate the building into an early education center and that's the use that will continue should the annexation be granted. And that type of land use will be generally supported by envisioned Franklin's of staff recommended approval.
Any questions? Alderman Martin, then Alderman Barnhill.
Why would we just annex that one little spot when there's land all around it that's in the county? Why would we just annex that one little piece?
It is unique, I will admit, but as part of the, or as part of the extension agreement for sewer to the Oakview Elementary and seem to be middle school, there was a clause that those properties would be annexed prior to serving them with city sewer. So we expect that request to be coming forward here in the coming months, most likely. But we also, in the meantime, know that this site is going to be served by sewer as well. So we decided that, well, we informed the applicant that the normal city policy is that they request annexation and come before this board to consider that. I will say that in this area, there is potential eventually, once sewer is provided to the area, there is likelihood that other properties might request annexation in the future. So this could be an area that grows into the city limits.
Back up and give just a little bit more on this.
The county bought the property?
It's still privately owned.
Okay.
It's just the sewer line is cutting across that property.
So who is requesting the annexation, the county or the property owner?
The property owner.
And the property owner by law has to request annexation. We can't just start annexing there.
Unless you held a referendum. So you're really following the state law, which is either the property owner requests it or you do a vote, as we did in the last election, for folks that are requesting to come into the city.
So what do they want to do with the property?
It's an early education center, so that's what that would maintain.
It just seems sort of strange that the school is right there and this is going to be a school and we would annex it and not annex.
Well, the school will annex in. When you did the inter-local agreement a year ago, one of those components is that before they tie onto the system and become active on the system, the school properties, both the elementary school and the new middle school will annex in. And in fact, I've communicated to the schools about us going ahead and initiating that process or doing that process in conjunction with this. I don't know that we've already done an agreement that says that that's going to happen, so I'm kind of checking in with them if there's any reason to not do that in conjunction with this property as well, so that you just kind of work with all of that at once.
Is there other, is there other property around there where the sewer is going to go through? That it's touching across the road?
I don't know if I have that level of detail on where the sewer will potentially go once it gets to the elementary and middle school. But it does seem that there might be potential farther to the west for some of those properties to be provided with there. I don't know the plan for that, so I can't give you any specifics. But it does seem that there are some properties interested in tying onto sewer, if it can even become available in that area, which I'm not sure.
Okay. Item six, procurement award to Fortline Water Works of Nashville, Tennessee in the total amount of $14,120 for 3,000 lids for water meter boxes for the water management department. I've allocated 20 minutes for this issue. Moving on.
Good job.
Yeah. We need the lids. Item seven is an ordinance to amending Chapter 8 of Franklin Municipal Code regarding public gatherings and expression events.
So this is a new ordinance that would provide some framework, both regulatory and guidance for those both holding or wanting to hold a public gathering or public expression event and give the city team guidance as well in terms of how we work with them, the permit process, the manners in which we can regulate time, location of such an expression. We don't regulate the content of public speech, but we do regulate how it happens and where it happens. And so this is an ordinance that our staff team has pulled together to address those elements. We did study some experiences that other communities have had. You know, a couple of years ago, both Murphy's Borough and Shelbyville were faced with some public expression events that were challenging. And so we discussed with them how they handled it and things that worked well in those situations to help formulate what we're putting before you tonight in terms of an ordinance that would address those elements. And Shawna will take you through that.
And I think also importantly, we asked them what they wish they would have had. So when protests came in and especially counter protest, what kind of tools did they wish they had that could have maybe helped address some of their issues? So the purpose of this ordinance is to first understand that we can only regulate certain things. We can regulate where things happen, but not what's said, right? So and or even really why they're there. Just, just the fact that they're coming is really all we really need to know. We are allowed to adopt and enforce regulations that implicate the First Amendment activity, but again, it has to be only time, place, and manner of their expression and it has to be narrowly tailored to serve our governmental interest. And we also have a very significant interest in making sure that we provide a safe and pleasant environment for people that want to come and protest. So it's not just about the people that might just happen to be in the area, but also the protesters themselves. We can issue permits for parades and other similar activities like this. And of course, there's a significant interest in making sure that there's public safety and we can get people around the city for traffic purposes in and around city parks, sidewalks, streets, and that kind of thing. I know this is tiny, but. But all of this is in your handout and in your ordinance, so you can read that. But so what's, what would be, what would be, we be looking at permitting? So non-commercial, public assembly, anything that's going to take place on a public property, sidewalk, park, alley. If it's going to obstruct or delay any sort of flow, we would want to permit that. And due to the crowd it generates, we want to make sure that we can permit those. We'll talk about crowds in a second. Are there going to be any sort of objects in and around the street? We would want to permit that. If there are any donations that are taking place, if there's more than 25 people. So you know, sometimes we do have a small group that wants to come to the courthouse or on the square and protest, you know, just a handful, those kind of things. That's not what we're talking about. It's bigger, bigger, 25 people or more gatherings. And if it lasts longer than 30 minutes. So it's not, a permit wouldn't be required. If it's less than 25 people, there's going to be a march, but we will, there is a section later about marches and when that's triggered, if you needed a permit. If participants will cross the streets only at crosswalks, they agree to all obey the traffic controls and that's hard if you get more than 25 people, if you think about it. That all the participants will obey the applicable laws, there's not going to be any obstructions of sidewalks. And then any sort of necessary needs, like toilet, sanitary facilities are available. If they are going to be protesting in a place on city property that doesn't have such things available, we would want to make sure we permit those. So it applies to any person desiring to conduct an event for which a permit is required. We ask that we have five business days in which to grant the permit and the permit will be granted by the city administrator or his designee. We will get into the five-minute requirement in a second, or five, five-business-day requirement in a second, but five-business days will give us enough time, one, to kind of figure out what's happening, but two, we can kind of look on social media to see if there's going to be any counter protest. We also want to make sure that we have safety on both sides of this. And our police department does a great job of using social media to find out what's going to happen. So if you're going to do a rally or a march, this, the permit's going to require a little bit more information, such as where are you going to start, where are you going to end, what's your route, and what kind of signs or banners are you going to be carrying and how many people do you think are going to come? So once we get an application, the city administrator must approve or deny that application. There might be times, the event might be so big that we'd want to take it to the board and in those situations, the ordinance provides for that. Depending on where it's going to be, how long it's going to take and what kind of an event it is, other departments will be consulted. And again, we have to approve it within five days and any denial is appealable to you. I know the font's very tiny again, but grounds for denial, it was submitted less than five days. Their information isn't true, they failed to complete the application. Their, the event or the, or the rally or the march is disruptive to something we already have. For example, if we are going to have an event downtown, a festival downtown, we wouldn't let someone march through the festival. So we would deny it for that reason. We would ask that they come a different day. Trying to think if there's anything else to point out. And again, all of those denials would come to you. We can put certain conditions on the permit if we need to do that and all of those are listed, but they kind of make common sense. Do we need to have someone here for first aid? Do we need to have police presence? Do we need to set up a fenced area for a counter protest and a protest to keep areas separate? They may ask for a certain part of the city, but we might require them to be in a different part. So if we had a counter protest and a protest, we might not want, everybody can't be in the square. So we would have to put them in two different places so that no one is in any particular place. Like yoga on the square. If we had a counter protest, we're a counter of yoga, like people brought their barcaloungers. So we can revoke the permit before the event. If any of the, if any of these things, an emergency arises or we find out that something wasn't accurate, that denial would come before you. If during the event, we find out that things weren't, we weren't, that the application wasn't accurate, that something happens while we're there, violations of our offenses against the peace and quiet are violated, at that point, we can revoke at that, at that, during that event. And that's all I had on it, but I'm very interested to hear what you guys think about this.
Thank you, Shawna. I suppose these are some of the things that we have to look at. And it looks pretty thorough. I had two quick questions. First of all, if they're in a public right of way and everything, they're not allowed to block sidewalks. People have to be able to get down there, that's one of these, right?
Right. So if they couldn't have a, they couldn't have a, like a protest on a sidewalk. If they want to have a protest, we would put them on some sort of public area, but not this, they can't block the sidewalk for egressing.
And this is in there.
Right. Now, if they want to march, they can march on the sidewalk, but they have to keep moving.
Okay. And then, just going to throw this out. It just popped into my head and I started thinking about it, thinking, well, you know, I don't know for infringing on people's rights, so I don't, I don't want to do that. But at the same time, is there any way to control the misuse of taking over our public spaces? How do we regulate someone from obtaining a permit, say, five days a week for three months in a row? What if someone came in and said, we're going to have a group of 30 or 40 people protesting because something's happening here and we're going to protest every day until this gets overturned or taken care of or whatever, whatever the case, whatever the issue might be? And so they obtain a permit five days a week for a month or two. Do we have any kind, any way to limit that?
This doesn't really address that, so.
Can we address that legally?
I mean, you could put, you could put conditions on the permit, I mean, and we could put them in here that, you know, you could have.
I've seen that happen before where a town has had.
We might want to look at that as a basis for a denial, if there's consecutive days or a, you know, a long-term disruption. I mean, you know, if you block the use of the square for a week, that, that's very different than a one-day demonstration, et cetera. So we may need to look at how that could fit in.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to somebody getting a permit for like three days in a row or, you know, if there's a big, something to do or something that's happening, a big issue that week and they're trying to make the impression on the elected officials, the whoever, whoever they're trying to reach, a company or whatever, I can see that. But I, I don't want, I want to make sure we have something in here that will give us a way to regulate someone from, and preventing someone from getting a permit every single day, multiple days, multiple weeks, multiple months.
That's a good point.
If I wanted to, if I wanted to get around this and I said, I want to expect 22 people here, when all along I know that it's going to be 50. How do you, how would you, how would you control that?
That would be, we would probably have the police come out and make people leave.
And run 28 off?
Well, that would be part of our reason for breaking it up is it's different than what had been, what had been either submitted, if they submitted a permit for one size and it changes.
They wasn't all necessary. All I'm saying is, is I'm not, you know, the 25 is fine. I'm not sure it doesn't need to be less than 25 for the permit. I don't know what you want to do on that.
We could think about that.
But I would think about that. I would just sit in here saying, if I wanted to avoid the permit, I would just say there's not going to be but 24 people here.
Well, this is not to stifle public speech and public input and public gathering and that not at all. It's really meant to help our, help them, help the, anybody that wants to come out and protest, keep them safe from anybody that might counter protest and the counter protester safe, but also keep our public spaces moving and free of, you know, people just standing on sidewalks.
All right. So that's why some of the parameters are here. If somebody exceeds that, then it's in a situation that would require a permit. So we could say, look, this is, this is an event that's beyond the scope of a non-permitted public demonstration. So you're going to need to work with us on our, on our date for a permitted event because you now have a larger event than, than what had been expected or what had been represented to us ahead of time. So these are all, gives us guidelines and folks who may want to have an event, guidelines on how they have to work with us and how we work with them.
I've got Alderman Plankton and then I've got Alderman Branchford.
This brings up so many questions. I think about Tommy Jackson, how every Sunday he's in front of the courthouse. We don't regulate that property, but what if it spills out into the sidewalk? I would hate to see something that's become part of our Americana be regulated. You know what I mean? So that's one thing that I'm concerned about. Think about the penalty financially, what does that look like? And then also, if it does engage our police officers, who covers that cost? I mean, we've had some opportunities here recently where we've really protected our citizens because there's been some things that could, could very much get out of hand and knowing that we're protected even where the human eye doesn't know we're protected. That costs money, you know? That costs expertise of officers where we've got that can take care of things. So I'm not trying to think grand scale, but you've got to be prepared for the least and the largest event. So those are some questions I think that we probably got to flesh out as well.
Some of those things have been well litigated over the past few years and unfortunately, we will bear the cost. We're seeing that cost really hit the colleges and some of the colleges have tried to file lawsuits about whether or not they can get reimbursement for the cost of their officers or, or any security guards they have to hire to be there. And the answer is no. We, we just have to, at least for now.
It's just public safety.
It's, yeah, it's public safety and people have the right to speak.
And this also applies, which begs me, a couple of weeks ago, within subdivisions where we own the city streets. It would apply there as well. I think we all start thinking public places like parks and the square and, you know, things that are very visible, but I think there's also those things that people don't think about as well. Are we going to regulate that? Are we going to reach that far into?
So.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. Do we differentiate? I think the question is, do we differentiate from, say, a neighborhood block party and a demonstration about a, you know, like a political topic of some kind, whatever it is of the day where people gather? And this really just provides a general framework. And I don't think we get into what the nature of that event is. That's where the size thing comes into it. Because we've had it larger, we've had it smaller in terms of when we've been working with this draft. And so that's part of what you need to think about or we all need to think about as well.
Lastly.
I don't have an easy answer for you.
Right. And then you think about the education piece. I mean, somebody comes in to do a protest, they're not really going to go to City Hall and ask for permission first.
Well, right now, we do.
And should they do it, what is the penalty? You know what I'm saying?
Right now, we ask that if you're going to come and have a protest, that you notify the chief of police and most people do that. We get a fair amount of calls that say, we're going to come do that. So, yeah, I do think that's really helpful. And there is some leeway with the city administrator's ability to grant permits. So for example, if something happened today at, somewhere in the federal government, maybe there was a vote in the House or the Senate or maybe state government and people need to come down and protest right now. They are so upset, they want to come down right now. They can't give five days' notice and there's a lot of case law that says that we can't hold them to a five-day requirement if, if the need is now. So we will look at that and let those kind of things happen if it's immediate right now.
I've got Alderman Branchford, then Alderman McLundon.
Well, actually, actually, my colleague has already sort of touched on my. Well, actually, actually, my colleague has already sort of touched on my question about location, because we sound like we're talking about the city square. But what if there's a park? What if all of a sudden Pinkerton Park become a gathering place for protests? Or, you know, the Eastern Frank area, whatever, what, what if that, is that the same thing?
Yes.
Because there could be issues related to, I don't know, a statue, a monument, or something that's in some park, or the Carnton Plantation, or whatever. Is there, do we cover that? Because just recently, at the plantation, we have installed some historical documents, monuments and things. What if someone wanted to come and protest that? How?
Well, this deals with public space.
Okay.
So, the, the Carnton Plantation is a private...
Okay.
...property. So something there would be a different thing. But this does deal with a request to have some form of a, of a public expression event, whether that's, they, they may come here thinking they want some location, and we may say, "Well, that's difficult, because either the size of the event, or something else is going on." And then we may talk about another location that they, that this organizer can hold it. So we always naturally think of the square, because that's the, the public gathering, the most common public gathering space, but it could address any public space. And it could also start a discussion around what is the appropriate public space to hold whatever the demonstration might be about. The organizer certainly is going to have something in mind, but it might start a dialogue about, "Well, maybe this might be a more appropriate place, both for demonstrators and counter demonstrators."
Alderman McLendon, Vice Mayor McLendon.
If you had told anyone I went to high school with that I would one day be the vice mayor of anywhere, they would have laughed. It says in violations, "It shall be an infraction for any person," and then "It shall be an infraction for any person." Basically, it says it'll be an infraction to either not get a permit when you should have, or violate your permit, or whatever. When it says "it shall be an infraction," does that mean our police can cite them into municipal court for up to a fifty-dollar fine?
Right. That's, that's our limit.
But not a misdemeanor?
Right. Not a misdemeanor.
Just a fifty-dollar fine?
But, that's for the violation of the permit aspect. If, if they do something criminal, that's totally different.
Right. If they commit disorderly conduct, or whatever.
There are other things that could apply.
Right. This is only city court.
Okay.
Only comment I had was amplification of sound. Did I, is there anything in there?
Our noise ordinance, our fences against the peace and quiet.
Yeah. Be consistent with that.
Right. So if they have, you know, they can amplify up until a certain time, you know, there comes a point when it might become a special event. So we have to look at how they're doing it. But if they just want to walk around with an amplification, you know, and march, they, they would be allowed to do that.
I, I can see possibly, you know, who knows, but people automatically think of the square, but how about Cool Springs?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
I mean, you might have a company doing something that people are saying, "This is criminal," or whatever, and people want to go out and protest. So where do they go?
They have, they can be on the sidewalk. They have to move. But once they get off the sidewalk onto the private property, the private property owner can do whatever they want to do. They're not bound by this, so...
Right. Okay.
It's up to them what they want to do. But if they stay on the sidewalk and they keep moving, that's totally fine.
Or if there's other public space...
Yeah.
...near or adjacent, they could pick...
Or they can get permission from a private entity to be on that. Okay.
Okay. Adam A. Discussion on Possible E-Scooter Regulations in Franklin. I know I have a number of speakers that want to talk about e-scooters, and here's what we're going to do. We're going to have a presentation by Holland, and the board then will make some comments and have some discussion, and then I'll call on you to come up and make your comments.
So I'll just say a couple words as we get started. This is a concept that came through a discussion with our Citizens Sustainability Commission about some ideas and options, and looking at what some other communities have done around this form of transportation. And so there was discussion there, and we took it on to have a discussion with sort of a focus group of staff members, say, if we went down this road, what are our options, and what might we look at? So, of course, we all hear, one of the most common concerns we hear in our community is around transportation and mobility. And so this is something to look at, to at least consider. And, and what we're talking about tonight is a very distinct question about whether you want your staff to continue to work on a pilot, developing a pilot program around this concept, in a, in a specific geographical area to develop more concepts about how it would work. We're not asking you to vote or implement anything tonight, and we're not that far along. But before we spend more time and effort looking at it, we wanted to get your feedback and guidance on, on where we should go, and if we should continue. So Holland has kind of led the staff work on this, and so she's going to present that to you tonight. And Andrew, Andrew's also worked on it, done some work, did some research in terms of what other cities have done, and lessons learned there. And so we'll walk through that with you tonight, and then be glad to answer other questions after this is through. And I know we have some, some public comments as well. But I do want to urge people, we're not to the point where we're implementing anything. We're just talking about whether we continue to research it and, and talk about options from there. And, and no, we're not talking about bringing them downtown. This is a very focused effort on, on where it might match with infrastructure and those types of needs. So, take it away, Holland.
Cool. Thank you all so much for having me. I'm so excited to present this topic to you. We'll go ahead and get started.
Just a little background information, and thanks for teeing it up. Last March, we had Councilman Elrod from Nashville and one of the Metro staffers come to the March Sustainability Commission meeting to talk about what their experience with scooters has been. One of our Sustainability Commission members, Nancy Woodmore, is a director of Metro General Services, so she made that connection for us. So we had a very lively discussion. They were able to kind of, you know, very frankly, share what their experience has been. I think we're all aware that Nashville's been a cautionary tale for scooters. And, you know, they were, quite frankly, very unprepared for what happened. And we'll talk a little bit more about, about Metro, but that's kind of how it kicked off. When we did the Lead for Cities last year, there were a couple of different categories, and transportation was one of the categories. And we, it was our lowest score by far. So I think the commission is interested in looking at some different alternative transportation options.
Okay. So what we want scooters to look like is to have it be able to be a last-mile mode of transportation, to have it work for people who want to go, maybe, go, go, go get lunch, go visit their friend, go shopping real quick. We want this to be an option out of all the transportation network, transportation options that they could have. We also want it to be accessible, and we want it to be safe for everyone who uses it, who walks around it, who drives by it. We want to make sure that's a priority as well. We want scooters to not be trash. We don't want it to be unsafe. We want it to work to the best of our ability, and we recognize that. So some current regulations that the city of Franklin has is that currently we do not allow motorized vehicles on sidewalks, except if it is a Segway tour, we'll go ahead and allow that. And helmets are not required.
So some of the other communities we looked at, we want to look kind of statewide, regionally. Memphis, Brentwood, Nashville, Knoxville. You know, the Nashville experience has been an evolving one. It started unexpectedly with tractor-trailers dumping scooters onto Broadway, and then they kind of reacted after that. From what I've gathered from a scooter company that's not operating in Nashville, the problem is they have way too many scooters and way too many operators. I think Memphis and Knoxville have kind of seen what transpired in Nashville and created a framework in their cities that was more workable. Memphis kicked off a program in the summer of 2018. They initially had two operators. I think they've, they can have up to five. Right now, they have four. So, one thing that's, that's happened, I was reviewing my notes, and I, I put together these notes back in June. And then I was kind of researching online, these cities. And what I noticed is, the, everything's changing. The number of operators is changing, the number of scooters is changing. The cities have created pilot programs, so they're kind of ever-evolving. Memphis now has scooters that have seats on them, just as of a few weeks ago. So, and they've added an operator, they lost an operator, they have, I think, over two thousand scooters now in Memphis. The one thing about Memphis I'll point out is they were very aggressive with their fee schedule. And basically, you know, tried to ilk every penny, I think, out of the scooter operators. And they were quoted as saying that they expected about a half a million dollars in fees this year from the operators. Brentwood does not allow scooters. They recently voted in the last few months. I think their city manager said it just wasn't a good fit, and they didn't, they've seen what transpired in Nashville and wanted to close the door on that and not get hit unexpectedly. When we go to, you can go to the next slide. Knoxville seems to be a good example. They issued a hundred-and-fifty-day moratorium on scooters to kind of prohibit scooter companies from just jumping in. And then they put out an RFP, they selected only two operators, and then limited the number of scooters. They identified an area and geo-fenced that area, so the scooters can only operate in that specific area. They seem to have a thoughtful set of regulations around what they've done, and they're, they're expanding. I spoke to a staffer last week, and he was surprised at the ridership. He said, "In the first six months, they had over two hundred thousand rides, and that was like exponentially more than their bike-share program had." So he said, "It's undeniable people use them." And then Asheville...
Yeah. So the city of Asheville did an e-bike and e-scooter feasibility study, and they're like, "Okay, we could probably make this work." But then they did go ahead and open a survey to their residents, say, "Hey, do you want this to be an option?" And the majority said no. So they have not continued with, with having e-scooters in their, in their city. Okay. So for safety, that was one of the big issues, one of the big concerns from the Sustainability Commission. We found that the CDC did a study that basically said forty percent of accidents usually involved a motorized vehicle, and the scooterist was not wearing a helmet. Otherwise, they don't really have much research on what safety looks like with scooters. Something that's really important when we consider, consider scooters in an area, that there's really good infrastructure. You want to make sure that you have bike lanes and multi-use paths just for scooters, so that they have a safe and reliable spot to take their, to, for riders to go from place to place. And then, when scooters are not in use, some companies are going ahead and designating spots for scooters to be dropped off, so that they're not just lying in, in the middle of a street, or they're piled up altogether, or they're in the trash can like we saw earlier. So some of them do go ahead, they'll provide like a discount if you are put, if you put your scooter in there. Some will continue to run the meter if you do not put your scooter in the designated spot. One company has actually already just put in a docking station to be like, "This is too much of an issue. We need actual infrastructure, so that you can put your scooter somewhere safe, so that people can still walk around, and they also know where the scooters are as well." We also did an internal deliberation between city employees. We had many departments who might be, who might have their expertise in this. We're just trying to figure out the temperature of our experts to see what, how, what's the city's stance on it. And so we discussed three different options. We had no scooters allowed. What would the pros and cons be of that? Option number two, scooter districts. So we just have it in like a little area, probably geo-fenced. It's not location-specific, but what would, what could, good, what bad could happen, could happen from that. And then we also had an option of, "Let's scooters ride. Let's just have them all throughout Franklin, not much regulation. What's going to happen there?" And so they're really trying to, we're trying to understand really what's the best fit for us. We also had, had about like ten questions posted around the room, just talking a little bit more about specifics of like, "Should there be helmets allowed? What should the age be?" But I know for now, we just want to focus on just a, a general idea of what we, what we could have. So we recommend that we could do a scooter district pilot program. So this would occur maybe for two months, however long we would want it. Vendors would go through a RFP process, and then we could choose as little as one scooter company. If you, the less vendors you have to work with, the easier it is going to, it is going to be to manage, manage that transportation, so that if a problem does arise, we don't have to figure out, you know, which scooter company it is, or where it's at. We can kind of hone in on one. Again, we would not have them in downtown Franklin. We have heard that from even inside, inside the city. They're like, "Absolutely not." And I get it. Violations would totally be handled by the, the scooter company. Knoxville does a really good job on their website. If there's ever an issue, they make sure that, that citizens go ahead and contact the scooter companies first, not the city. Unless it is an emergency, go ahead, call 911. But it is always in the scooter company's hands, not in the city's. So we would recommend that scooters can ride on local streets, bike lanes, multi-use trails. That's probably the best infrastructure for scooters. So with that, do y'all have any questions?
Alderman Berger.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Alderman Berger, by the way, is on the Sustainability Commission.
I was just going to say, I, I sit on the Sustainability Commission as appointed by the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been great being on that commission. And Andrew, I really think we have a lot of very learned and smart people on that commission, and great things I think will be seen from that commission coming up. I just want to thank you for that presentation. It was really well done. And I just want to bring, ratchet it down from everything we've been hearing in the community. I think it's, you know, the story gets out there in the newspaper, then everybody gets worried about these things. I know Nashville did it wrong. They allowed this to come into their community without regulations. It went, ran amok, and they had lots of issues. So when people think the word scooter here, they go, "Oh, my gosh." And they think about Nashville. And so I've told a lot of my constituents, "Anything you know about Nashville, I think, everything you know that is wrong about scooters, throw it out the window, because that is not what would I would ever want here in our town." This has been brought up in the Sustainability Commission, and we talked about the importance of transportation. And my area is really where I would like to see a pilot program. I'd like to see a pilot program only in the corporate centers in Cool Springs, and in a very limited area. And we're talking about probably from, maybe around the, could be around the hospital, or it could be starting at Liberty Pike and going up towards Baker's Bridge. We have a multimodal, multimodal trail in that area. We also have a lot of businesses that, we have issues getting people out between eight and five. And there are going to be a lot of, they're going to, there's going to be a lot of new mobility inventions coming up in the future. And we're going to see more that we've never even thought of. So I'm not particularly married to scooters, but I am, my, my big thing is transportation and trying to get these cars out of the Cool Springs area between eight and five. And so, for the last eight months, on and off, mostly in the spring of last spring, and some, this, I didn't do anything this summer, but it was mainly last spring, I spent time walking up and down some of the streets over on Cool Springs Boulevard in Carruthers, talking to people who were out walking. And then I went to the park. Some days, I went to the parking lot as people were getting in their cars at noon. And I ran up to them, and I said, "Excuse me," and I told them who I was. I said, "I'm doing a survey." And I said, "I just need to know two things. Why are you getting in your car? Are you going out to lunch? And why aren't you walking? And have you walked to lunch?" And blah, 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 a few things. It was really interesting what I learned from the people walking and getting in their cars in the Cool Springs area. And it was like clockwork. The people said, "If I had another mode of transportation, and I could get on and go down to the, to the new, well, there's a new restaurant called The Rutledge, and then they can go down to Chicken Salad Chick over by the Lifetime." There's other restaurants up and down on, on Carruthers. If, they said, "If we could get on something where we could just, you know, a bike or a scooter or something, yes, we'd do it every day. We could, any day we go out, we would do it." And most of them said, "We don't walk." And most of them said, "We don't walk. We have to get in our cars because we have about an hour. And if we get out on the sidewalk and we have to walk from our building out to the sidewalk, because most of those buildings are set back in, and then walk down, and then get served, and then walk back and get, we're, we're way beyond our hour." So they said, "If there's any way you can get us a different mode of transportation, you know, if we had the circulator, which we've talked about, and hopefully the circulator will happen in the Cool Springs area where people can jump on and off and, and get around later on." But that's a number of years away. So I thought, when we talked about it at Sustainability, that the trial program there would be excellent. And you won't see these on sidewalks because you have to, you have to get buy-in by some of the companies over there, the Nissans, the Schneider Electrics, the other people, the, even the hotels, that if they would agree to have some docking stations and some parking spaces for these. The people would come out of their buildings, they'd get on them. And, and like in Nashville, you might have a one-way trip. Here, you wouldn't have a one-way trip because people have to go out, they have to get back to their offices. So you would get on them, and you'd probably get on them at your buildings, and then you would scooter down the way to a restaurant, or CVS, or Walgreens, or something, or do your errand, and then scooter back, and then park that bike again. But then when you are at your destination, you would park it where you are there. And I've talked to a number of the restaurants, and they said, "Let us know if that happens. We'll get a space where we can park these scooters because we want the people to come to lunch. We want to get more people out of the buildings coming to lunch." And we know a lot of them don't do that because they have to go to the parking lot or to the parking garages, get in their cars, drive out, then you fight the traffic again as well. So those are just some of the points I wanted to get across. It is GPS-controlled, you can't go out of the, the pilot area that we, the trial area that we would have. Mostly it'd be eight to five. It would be adults, the workers, the employees that would be using these. Helmets could or could not be required depending on what we want, docking stations, I talked about that. And the sidewalks are not really near the destinations itself, just a few of the restaurants and things they are. But you have to actually go into the areas to get to the restaurants. You have to go back into the areas to the, to the corporate centers to actually be there to get the scooters. There would be no reason if I took a scooter out in, out of Schneider Electric, why would I leave it on a sidewalk? Because you have to actually go there to get it, and then if I'm going to a restaurant, I have to get back. And then if we're talking to some of the entities along those way, on the, along the way on Carruthers and Cool Springs, and then we have a number of new restaurants coming in at Liberty and Carruthers, and a multimodal path in that area. So I just wanted to get a few of those points across. I think that my big thing is the alternatives for transportation. And as I said, it's not a design as a one-time-out deal. It's out and back on these scooters in the corporate areas. And it is not an easy jump like some people think that it would happen anywhere else in our city or downtown. It is not an easy jump at all, and I don't think any of us are interested in that. The reason they don't fit downtown, we have a very small downtown, it's very walkable, and it's very compact. Scooters don't belong there. They belong in a bigger, larger area where it's very difficult to get around. So those are just some of the things I want to share, thanks.
Who else wants to make a comment? Alderman McClendon. Vice Mayor McClendon, it'll take me a while to get used to that.
It's going to take me longer.
I've got a year. I've got a year.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for looking at ways to ameliorate our, some of the traffic issues that we have. I, I, I can't support this. I don't govern by opinion poll, but it was, and I seldom go on social media, but in my neighborhood, it was 100% against. And maybe some of those people are misinformed, maybe not. But I just, this, this strikes me as a cure worse than a condition.
Alderman Speedy.
I guess my comments would be is I, I agree with Alderman Berger that that last mile is definitely an issue, and we need to figure out a way to solve it. That being said, I also work in downtown Nashville in Demond Brans, so I've seen the scooters, and we all know how horrible they are. So I guess if I was going to lean towards a pilot program, I would like to see bikes with bicycle racks, and see if they're actually used. And I also think this is another, maybe this may be 10, 20 years down the road, but eventually this city will be connected completely. Multi-use trails, hopefully, sidewalks, multi-use trails, et cetera. In most places you go, like, I was thinking Greenville, the Swamp Rabbit Trail, for example, they don't allow any motorized vehicles. So again, I just don't think the e-scooters powered by however they're powered are a solution, and maybe we don't want them eventually on our public connectivity and paths. I mean, I, I still feel young and feel relatively healthy, but I wouldn't ride a scooter now, I guess. I just wouldn't for my own safety.
Can I ask Scott if he would support something from that? Would you support for us to move forward with Sustainability and with the staff to support looking into bikes as well? Because, as I said, I'm.
I think a lot of cities have had bike programs. I just think, like Dana, I don't have a Facebook account, but I've seen the social media, and it's just, and I've been downtown where those things whiz past you, and you're like, "Holy cow."
Sure.
I'll make a quick comment about the bikes. We've done a lot of study on bikes, and we were approved for a pretty significant bike share program. But I think we never came up, the community never came up with the matching funds. So we, we probably have a lot of work that we've done that, that could come back at some point in time. I've got Alderman Bransford.
I would love to be able to say it didn't work.
Are you serious? Are you serious?
I'm glad you, I'm glad you didn't hear that. No, no, I think, no, we got to move with the times. I think this is a perfect location to put such a pilot. We have a lot of young people working in those high-rises, in those offices, out there in that area. And they are used to this. I would be afraid to get on one personally myself. So, you know, there is a, there's a need for a certain age group for this to happen. I, I don't think you can see a lot of senior citizens riding around Cool Springs on scooters. But I think there, the young people who work in those offices will see some value in this, and I think we will see some input Monday through Friday. Now, if it was Saturday and Sunday, I think you will see a lot of young people who go into the malls wanting to use those, and that would be a whole different story because, okay, so I, I like that limitation of it's for the work week, correct? It's for the work week in the GPS thing. So I'll be willing to support the recommendation that we look at. Now, timeframe, is it six months, or is it eight months? Because we need to start, and we need to reevaluate and say, "Good job, not a good job, whatever," and move, move on.
Well, the question we're asking you is not to-go or no-go, it's whether you want us to develop a pilot, a proposal for a pilot program. So we're not even to that stage to give you, do you want us to spend time in effort to develop a, a specific district and some additional sort of guidelines for how it might work, and, and how we might work with a vendor, and, and the elements that Holland kind of laid out? But, but give you that in more specifics so that you can make a decision if you want to do a pilot program.
Well, I was impressed with the numbers. You said Knoxville someone started, and in a matter of weeks, they had like 2,000 riders or whatever. So I would be interested in pursuing that, yes.
200,000 riders in six months, I would have to say. Alderman Martin.
I have received probably more emails about this than anything I've ever received them. And every sing, every single one of them have been opposed, except one. And he said, he, he was opposed not because he hadn't ridden them in Nashville, he likes them, but he said he thought it would be very difficult to police, to control. And when you have the scooter district pilot program here, violations would be handled by the scooter company. You know, where is the scooter company? You've got scooters here, and you got a violation, who's going to see about it? You know, it's, it's very vague, kind of out there in the clouds. So I, I will not support it.
Other, other folks want to say, Alderman Blenin?
Oh, I was going to also bring up the bike thing. We have traveled down that road, and you're right, we just couldn't come up with the matching funds, much like in Greenville, who also has bikes. But also like Margaret, I've had a tremendous amount of public outcry. And, you know, one of the things too, I know it's a very dense commuter situation, so that brings up the danger factor. I mean, I know that during the workday, a lot of people are already implanted in their work desk and all that, but people do go out for lunch. And you just think, oh Dana, I feel like I can just see these little rows of scooters like ducks on the sidewalk. And those ducks have to cross the road. And sometimes you want to get to that yellow light before it's your turn. And I just think it's, I just see that it, to me, the dangerous opportunity there is another thing that we just, you can't predict. And I just, I can't support it at this time. I think that, you know, we've got the TMA group, and we've got the Franklin Transit, and we have opportunities if we can get that circulator going. We've done other things that make things better for our corporate partners in allowing them to have food trucks in their parking lots. I'm not at all wanting to take away from the restaurants who need, you know, bottoms in the seats, lunch and dinner. But I don't think that this is the way that we need to do it. I think we can learn from our neighbors to see what didn't work, and I just, I just can't support it.
Alderman Barnhill.
Well, there's no need of me echoing the percentage of calls that I've received and emails that I've received against this. It's overwhelming. I've even had offers from people to carry me to downtown Nashville to see firsthand what they are experiencing. You know, I, if you're, if you're looking at the pilot program itself, and I, I'm not sure how far that goes and where, and where it goes on that. But scooters can ride on the local streets, bike lanes, multi-use trails. Local streets probably are not where they need to be. And, and, you know, I, I just, I think we're, I think we're probably spinning our wheels on this, is what I think. And I think that the opposition, unless we're able to convince and, and do a better job with the ones that I'm getting the emails from as far as downtown, as far as where it's not going to be, not where it's going to be, or where it's not going to be. We're probably just in an area that we would be just as well off if we went to another area, so.
Alderman Peterson, we haven't heard from you, would you like to make a comment? I may close it, but you go ahead.
Sometimes we have the tendency to always look at the negative. And we look at Nashville and go, "Oh, my gosh, we don't, we don't want that. I don't want that, good lord, I don't want that." If I did, I shouldn't be on the Sustainability Commission then. We always, we've learned from our neighbors. I think we said something, we need to learn from our neighbors, I think we have. We know what we don't want to do, but then we look at Knoxville and go, "Great job, Knoxville. You've done a great job, you've got a great program." There's danger in everything we do. There's danger in walking out that front door. When we have a public outcry, the public outcry was, Dana, you said, Fieldstone Farms and people, they don't want it. They think of Nashville, they think of the negative, they think of the wrong, they think of the worst things. There's no, I don't, you know, wish we could be a little bit more positive and think, what are the possibilities here? Because I'm trying to get the workers in Cool Springs around, and we complain about traffic all the time, and people tell us that we need to do more about traffic, and we're trying to do something about it. But yet, we are against even looking at something that could be tested and thrown out the window if it doesn't work. But no, we don't, we don't want to even give it an opportunity because we have a unique area over here. I was looking at this area, marking it all up with where we could get these scooters around and, or bikes. You know, maybe the bikes would work because that's a little bit more expensive. Scooters wouldn't cost us anything, actually, we would reap the benefit from, money from that. But anyway, I think people are opposed to what they don't know. They, most of the people I talked to had no clue that this was in a very, very specific, tight, geographically controlled area for the employees in Cool Springs. All they think about is maybe Fieldstone, or they think of downtown, or they think of something else. And they go, "Time out, no, don't want it." And so, you know, some of those comments, we have to say, "Let's have an educated opinion too, and, and look at what's happened in Knoxville and a few other places that have done it right." I still will support, would like to support a pilot to look at bringing back an opportunity for a small, very tight pilot program, maybe from Liberty Pike to even closer to Baker's Bridge Road, maybe not even up that far. But it's all GPS-controlled, so you cannot take your scooter and go outside the geographical area. And if we don't do this, that's fine. We brought it to you, we've talked to you about it. But I would expect all seven, eight of us on this board to go to work and find other alternatives because I represent a ward that is bogged down in traffic every single day. And I'm just tired of it as long as, as everyone else over there is. And I've been trying to help them figure this out. And I've been trying to talk to the workers and employees who have been getting in their cars. I spent hours on hour, hours on end over there in those parking lots, talking to people. And I have to go back to them and say, "Nah, people are negative about it because they don't understand it. They don't understand that it's in a geographical area, very small, we don't even get a pilot program. We don't even get to test it out with you." And if we test it out and it doesn't work, great, doesn't work, let's do something. But if we don't do it, let's try something else.
Well, while I have, did you want to make a? Let's have Sally McCorkle, Carol Miller, and Jordan Shaw. And while they're coming up, you know, I'm downtown Nashville quite a bit for meetings related to what I do. And, you know, I've tripped over several of them in my experience, not because I'm clumsy, because they're in the way. And I just came back from San Antonio, and there are litter problem there also. I applaud Alderman Berger for her survey. I'm, I'm not sure how valid her survey is, and maybe there is some way to obtain more information from our corporate citizens out there as far as would they use a bike, would they use a circulator? And I really hear more emphasis on bikes and really a lot more on circulator. And I think circulator at a given time is pretty positive. So, anyway, Ms. McCorkle.
Thank you, very nice to meet you.
90 seconds because that's what I gave the other guy.
You told me 20 minutes.
That's if you rode a scooter here. Or if you rode a bicycle.
Well, much of what's been said, I want to repeat because I have to stick with my script, but I'd like to just bring to your attention the public's strong opposition to e-scooters as expressed on the social network app, Nextdoor.com. Since November 21st, there's been approximately 170 comments, just in my area alone, all of which were adamantly opposed. As Alderman Berger stated in her response on that platform, she and the Sustainable Commission want this, you know, want this pilot program in Cool Springs. And yes, we do have a problem in school, in Cool Springs. And, you know, we could even go back to say, some of our growth strategy has contributed to that problem. But Alderman Berger claims that this scooter buying, is, is, there's a buy-in by companies, retail, and restaurants. Well, of course, retail and restaurants would want this, they have absolutely nothing to lose. But I am really hard-pressed to believe that Schneider Electric, or Mars, or Nissan would encourage anyone in their brain trust to hop on a scooter to go and have lunch at Bricktops. And I'm wondering, did this? And I'm wondering, did the Sustainability Commission give our dedicated law enforcement and other first responders, responders, or Williamson Medical Center the same opportunity to weigh in? Studies have more than proven scooters should be a public safety risk and an enforcement and aesthetic nightmare. And on a side note, but related, was it ovation in these surrounding mixed-use developments designed to change our land use patterns to encourage less resist, reliance on cars? Well, since that apparently has not worked, why are we not vigorously promoting apps like Hitch already in place that not only lessen the number of cars, but offer monetary incentives for ride-sharing and actually serve to foster community? Isn't that the culture that we want to encourage here? I just strongly suggest that we nix this pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Hi, my name is Carol Miller, and I'm a family nurse practitioner, and about half of my practice has been devoted to trauma and head injuries, both civilian and military, acute and rehab. A couple of suggestions, when somebody says to me, "Okay, if you've got a problem, don't talk about the problem, give me an answer." One of the answers to these guys over there, if Apple could put a cafeteria in their building, I think Nissan may can squeeze out a couple of dollars to put one there. We also have e-delivery, we have delivery of food, if that's what they're looking for is food. We've got in-house things that could be available for these people if they want to do that. Amazon is fantastic, if they've got to get something from Walgreens, guess what? They can get it there in a heartbeat. But that's just off the side. Let me just talk real quickly about where I'm from. In a medical point of view, these are just a few of the things I gathered from the internet. I know that there's a long study. We appreciate your presentation. Who pays for injuries blamed on e-scooters? Insurance Journal. Are electric scooters safe? New study finds thousands wind up in U.S. in the ER. That's from today.com. Eight deaths now tied to e-scooters, Consumer Report. Kevin Moore, fabulous, dangerous e-scooters truly, some people just have no business riding them. That's from the North Kentucky Tribune. Singapore joins France in banning e-scooters from the city's footpath. CNN Travel, how dangerous are electric scooters? Forbes, emergency room sees spike in scooter-related head injuries. That's my bag. And it's 48%, not 40%, it's just updated. I practice evidence-based practice, so I'm not going to give you any of this stuff that doesn't come either within the last year research. It has to be updated for you to hear. E-scooters, love them or hate them, here's what you need to know, there's an article in USA Today. New study shows how dangerous e-scooters are really are. At the time of the studies, showed 48% of the injuries were head injuries. Head injuries have lifelong implications, let me tell you. E-scooter ride-share industry leaves injured and angered cities in its path. A Consumer Report investigation found 1,500 e-scooter injuries across the country, and many hospitals don't track them, and your scooter companies don't track them either. So when you talk about they're gonna take care of the violations, they don't even take care of the scooters much less, and they don't know what's happening. This is just a sampling of the study's articles reporting on e-scooters, implications and results. These companies do not give a rip about the injuries, disabilities, or the expense of negative events from the use of the scooters. Their focus is profit. Much like the opioid company that marketed the drugs as being, "Okay, we're gonna do it right. This is the answer." So, market, market, profit, profit, and you're on your own to pick up the legal trash and the human damage that results. Who will lie to the riders?
You'll wrap up, please, ma'am.
Who will come to the aid of the pedestrian knocked off the path by one? Who will pay for the urgent care or ER and the innocent party?
I've asked you politely to finish, if you would go ahead and close immediately. I'm right here. I'm asking you, exceeded your time, and I've asked you three times if you would finish.
I'm sorry, sir. I apologize. Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I apologize, I thought I could cover it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'll be as eloquent as the other two, but I had a lot more that I was gonna say, but, you know, some of the comments against has kind of addressed what I was gonna say. But when I first heard about this, I thought someone had started hitting the holiday sauce a little early, because you only gotta look 15 miles north to Nashville, just finding this is a problem that Franklin does not need or shouldn't want. Nashville considered abandoning them, and I don't want the camel to get the nose in the tent here in Franklin. Places all over the country are talking about scooters and banning them. Why would we open up our city to this issue? In my opinion, it's only a matter of time before they end up downtown. And also, I've got a son who's just a fairly new driver, and, you know, we've got a lot of kids that are driving, you know, new drivers, we've got a lot of schools around there. If you've been in Nashville, these things zip across the street, there's been tons of accidents, there's been tons of issues. I did a little five-minute, you know, web search, and these are some of the headlines that I found. The Guardian, man killed in France while, while riding a scooter. Washington Post, man dies in scooter accident in Dallas. Tennessean, man struck by car while riding scooter, dies. Denver Post, booming electric scooters leads to more injuries and fatalities. ET Online, YouTube star dies at 35 in electric scooter collision. Sacramento Bee, 70-year-old man on scooter dies in car crash. La Jolla Light out of San Diego, councilman calls for electric scooter moratorium in San Diego. Lexington, man killed in Lexington car crash. Jakarta over in India, two 18-year-olds die after being hit by car. CNN.com, electric scooters face bans and restrictions all over the world. Vox.com, electric scooters aren't as good as, for the environment as you think. Duke Chronicle, despite the popularity on campus, number of electric scooter injuries grow. Washington Street Journal, teen on electric scooter dies after collision with a truck. Not only do I fear for the kids and people riding them, but also the police. You know, these rules are only as good as the enforcement. And I don't want our police having to go around and enforce these rules, you know, but they're taking time away from actual crimes, you know? Petty, I mean, there's gonna arise in car theft and all this other stuff, so.
You'll go ahead and wrap up, please.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments, board? We'll see you at 7 o'clock.